Sweet.
All right, I'm gonna call this little training to order. Roll call. We can just sit.
May I?
Here.
Trustee Weber. Trustee Smith.
Here.
Trustee Grithon. Trustee Valentine.
Here.
Trustee Marco.
Still there.
Trustee Stotter.
Okay. All right.
Not a forum, but it's a work session, so it's not fair, isn't that decision to go with me?
That's right. You know, chain them and make sure they watch them.
May I back up again once again on Maybach Northwest Regional Bureau of Department of Local Affairs, National Economy, and Health of Towns. Better understand budgeting, better understand budget situation and trends going into your next year's budget cycle. That's my conclusion. Mia Gonzalez is from our fiscal section inside the Department of Vision. She'll provide the first part, and Marcellus Risto will be joining us in a little bit.
Hi, everyone. I'm really glad to be here this evening. Um, I'm going to probably stand right here unless I'm blocking your view there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, so as Dana said, I'm Mia Gonzalez. I'm the Budget Program Administrator for the Division of Local Government in the Department of Local Affairs. Um, so tonight, my purpose is to provide an overview of the budget law, the components that make up an annual budget filing, and some important dates that are going to be coming up, as well as a brief discussion about budget amendments and legal limits, and then wrapping it up with some importance for establishing financial policy. But before I do get to all that, I just wanted to briefly note how our department is organized. Um, for those of you who don't know, the Department of Local Affairs is one of the smaller departments in the state, but we have four divisions. We've got the Board of Assessment Appeals, the Division of Housing, and then the Division of Property Taxation. And then, of course, there's us, the Division of Local Government. We often call ourselves DLG. And we provide financial assistance, as you all know, funding programs, technical assistance, like our discussion tonight, and regional services provided by folks like Dana, and our Colorado Resiliency Office helps support all of the governments.
Hi. Hi, Mia.
I can power over if you want.
Try and keep everyone close to me.
Sorry.
So, um, in the state, we have about 4,400 active local governments. Part of our role is to maintain an inventory of all of these active local governments and act as a repository of information for filings that are required by statute to us. As you can see, um, about half in the state are made up of actually Title 32-1 metropolitan districts. Most of them, 4,000, do need to file their annual budget with us. Those are all publicly available filings that are shown on our website that I've posted up there. So now we can finally get to budgets. Well, what's the purpose of a budget? I think most of us think of a budget in its most simplest forms. We're thinking about it in terms of revenues and expenditures, dollars and results, maybe even goals with price tax. But a budget is really more than numbers. It's a tool to communicate with your community about your financial health, priorities, and how you're planning to get there. It's a document, it's your policy guide, your financial plan, your operations guide. It's an entire set of processes. It's a system that requires a collaborative network in which you're looking to carry priorities and goals year over year. And I did want to include this. This is something that I actually recently attended that was provided by the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA. It was a series of webinars, and the presenter had listened to this podcast where Rick Cole, who's a former city manager for a pretty large city in California, was being interviewed. He was asked, "What's the purpose of local government?" And he said, "I'm often asked this, and when I ask others, we all answer very similarly. We provide services, fire protection services, policing, land use regulation." But really, what it comes down to is we're in the business of solving problems. How can we make our budget work for our community's needs? So it is collaborative in nature. However, we still have some distinct roles in a local government. The board's responsibility is to ask, "Well, what to do? What are going, what are our priorities for this year? What are the community's needs for this year?" The manager administrative staff's role is to ask, "How do we do it? How are we going to support these goals and priorities?" And so next, I'm going to start talking about the budget law. It lives in the Colorado Revised Statutes as Title 29, Article 1. We like to call it the budget law for short. And as we go through the budget law, we're going to see that through the process of being compliant, there's going to be different components that end up coming together to create an annual budget filing. And as you go through the process, a lot of folks will start to see the distinguishing roles between a board and an administrative staff. What roles do they have to be compliant with in terms of the statute? So first, though, who actually has to do it? Well, the budget law has a very clear definition. It's authorities, counties, municipalities, districts, local subdivisions, like your urban renewal authorities, your downtown development authorities, and any entity that has been created by an intergovernmental agreement. There are exceptions. Your Colorado Beef Council, your Sheep and Wool Council. Public schools actually have their own set of statutes. And interestingly enough, home rural municipalities in our one territorial charter Georgetown do not have to follow the budget law. There's a caveat. The budget law goes on to state, uh, 29-1113, that they do still have to actually file a budget with us, whatever it is the process is. Most will just follow the budget law. So this is where we're going to start. It's a lot. I don't expect any of you to read this. This is starting out just to say, "Well, what's the first part of the budgeting process according to the budget law?" First part is the budget message. This is typically done by the administrative staff. Whoever the board has appointed to be your budget officer, so your finance director, your town manager, is typically what I see. And a budget message is a written message describing the important features of the proposed budget, including a statement of the budgetary basis of accounting used and a description of the services to be delivered during the budget year. Important features isn't defined here. That means that it's a local choice. What do you interpret to be the most important feature of your budget for that year? Basis of accounting, are you using cash, modified accrual encumbrances? It's basically just allowing the public to help understand how the numbers work. Description of the services is allowing the public to understand how resources are being allocated. This is one example of a budget message from a water and sanitation district. Now, this is not a gold standard. You're going to see that the way to comply can vary. This is just one of the ways that a budget message can be shown.
No idea what, oh, it's, it's, I jumped you forward two slides.
Okay. It's okay.
Whoa.
There we go.
Sorry about that.
No, you're fine. So at the top, we can see that they've provided a description of services. Um, they've clearly stated they use modified accrual as their basis of accounting. And then they continue on to list their funds and their revenues. Listing their funds and revenues is what tells us that that's what they interpret to be the most important feature of their budget. This water and sanitation district also does something extra. It's not required by law, but they actually put down their emergency reserves. It's a common practice to just note that you're actually in compliance with Tabor. It's an easy, simple way to tell the public that you are. Budget schedules was the second part of that really long statute I just showed. Budget schedules is your complete financial plan by fund and by spending agency. This is also typically generated by your budget officer or your finance team or your administrative staff. We need to see expenditures for administration, operations, maintenance, debt service, capital projects, revenues, estimated beginning and ending fund balances, and then three years of financial data. This example is from Durango. Again, yours might look very differently. We can see their 2020 actuals, 2021 estimates, and then their numbers for their adopted budget. And then they go on to list their expenditures. And then at the bottom, we see their fund balance, and then they have plus components where they call up their Tabor reserves and operating reserves as well. So budget law does not specify how detailed your budget needs to be. Most of the time, though, your financial team, your administrative staff, is going to be the one that has the most input in terms of what your line items will look like. Typically, the board will just be looking at the budget from a fund level. Once the budget officer, again, the person that the board has designated to be the one that is the budget officer who will prepare and then present the schedules and the budget message to the board by October 15th of each year, upon presenting it, the board needs to cause a notice for a budget hearing because it is a public process. So the budget hearing notice needs to include the date and time. It needs to also make it very clear that this is a public process where the public can actually file objections to. And unfortunately, budget law has not been updated yet in terms of how the notice can be published. Most other statutes will allow you to just go ahead and post your notice online. Budget hearing notice, however, still needs to be published if your proposed budget is more than $50,000. If it's $50,000 or equal to or less, um, you can just go ahead and post it in three public places, so that's sufficient. So now, we can move on after you, as the board, have received the proposed budget. Budget hearing has happened. Revisions are made if they're necessary. Now it's the board's responsibility to take three formal actions. The first is to actually adopt the budget by an ordinance or a resolution. The second is to make appropriations, set spending limits by fund or spending agency. And the third, which is applicable here, is if you have a mill levy, you should also set the mill levy by resolution ordinance. Here's just one example. You can do all three of those actions all in one resolution or one ordinance. But this library district has decided to do this separately. They've got a resolution to adopt, resolution to appropriate, and you can see that they're appropriating by fund. So it really does reinforce that as a board, we're really looking at this at the high level. And then a resolution to set the mill levy. And so all three of these components, the budget message, the schedules, your financials, and all three of your resolutions, by January 31st, they're all combined together to create the annual budget filing, which has been submitted to the division. And typically, the person that submits this is going to be your budget officer. And then just some key deadlines that are going to be coming up. I already mentioned October 15th as the deadline for the budget officer to present or propose the budget. Right after that, you're going to take formal action to adopt, appropriate, and set the mill levy. And then there's two deadlines here in December. This depends on whether or not you have a mill levy. If you do have a mill levy, it needs to be certified to the county by December 15th, which means that's your actual deadline for adopting and making appropriations. If you didn't have a mill levy, you would have until December 31st to actually adopt the budget. And now I'm just gonna go over really briefly budget amendments. So circumstances in which you might have to change the budget because the general assembly does acknowledge that a lot can change between the time that you adopt your budget throughout the rest of the budgeted year. Typically, when a budget amendment is needed, administrative staff is the one that notices and brings it up to the board. The first two that I'm going to talk about is when expenditures exceed appropriations. So it's called a transfer amendment, the first one. You're moving money from one appropriated fund to another. A great example of this is if you're moving money from general fund to capital fund. Your budget needs to be amended in a statutory way because the fund that's receiving the money.
I'm not sure why it's doing that, and I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. The fund that's receiving the money, in this case, the capital fund, already has a set appropriation. But before you can move the money that you're transferring into there, you actually have to increase that appropriation. Um, it requires a public meeting to conduct a hearing, and then you do need to adopt the amendment by resolution ordinance to be filed with the division. Supplemental amendment, the procedural requirements are also the same. Budget hearing, adopt amendment. But this one is when you're receiving unanticipated revenues that you'd like to spend within the budget year. So a great example of this is receiving ARPA funds. The third one is called a revision amendment. This one is very rare. I don't think I've ever come across one, actually. The best example that we can think of is if your local Walmart shuts down and your revenues significantly drop more than what you expected, then a staff member or a board member can then recommend to have an amendment, but it's optional. So it's optional to have a budget hearing, it's optional to actually even adopt a resolution ordinance for it. In cases of an emergency, the governing body can authorize the expenditure of funds in excess of the appropriation by ordinance or resolution, so you can have a contingency. So this is one, like an unexpected repair project that requires dipping into reserves. We commonly see this in practice. It's never been tested in court. So these are one of those instances. If you find yourselves in one, we highly recommend that you do reach out to your town attorney. You should adopt a resolution or ordinance at a public meeting. And in your meeting minutes, you should also detail the circumstances of what you consider as an emergency because in statute, emergency here does not mean the same thing as how Tabor outlines emergency. There isn't a specific definition as to what constitutes an emergency for contingency, which is why it's best to reach out to your town attorney if you find yourself here. And next, I'm going to go over some legal limits. Um, I just want to preface and say that we are not Tabor experts. So if you have specific questions about Tabor, it's always best to also open your attorney to. We're more than happy to help guide you to where to look at in Tabor for, to answer your questions. But this is going to be a really brief and general overview of the legal limits.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, and I don't know if it belongs here or elsewhere. So we have the enterprise funds and then the general fund. And it's my understanding, one can transfer to the other, but then you can't transfer back the other way. Is that correct? If you can, can you take general administration funds and put them into enterprise funds? Can you take enterprise funds and put them into the general fund?
No, that's a great question because the enterprise fund might work a little bit differently. If it were any other fund, I wouldn't see a problem with it. It would be a transfer amendment. But because it's an enterprise fund, that's something that I would want to double check rather than mistaking information.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's a great question now. Now I'm thinking about that. I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions before I move on to legal limits? Okay. So in general, there are five legal limits that live in the Constitution and the Colorado Revised Statutes. Three are related to property tax, but the first two that I'm going to talk about are not. The first one is debt, which is set by Tabor, requires voter approval in advance unless you're refinancing or adding new employees to district pension plans. We don't often see this limit in budgeting. Back up. The second limit is the fiscal year spending limit. So this one is also set by Tabor. This is the maximum percentage increase allowed, which is the percent change of inflation plus local growth. Based on its definition, this fiscal year spending limit is either going to be your expenditures or your revenues. The bottom is what your exceptions are, so federal funds, property sales, collections. Um, if you have not debrused this limit, which I'll get to debrusing in a few slides, but if you haven't debrused this, then the source of a grant can be critical. If it's a federal fund, it's exempt. But if you're receiving a grant from the state, that could potentially trigger a refund. And then the next three are the ones that are related to property tax. First is the mill levy limit set by Tabor. Voter approval in advance for any mill levy increases, tax increases. Property tax revenue limit is also set by Tabor. So this is the maximum annual percentage change in each district's property tax revenue has to equal inflation in the prior calendar year plus annual local growth. So dollars generated cannot exceed inflation plus local growth. And then the last one is the five and a half percent property tax revenue limit, the annual levy law.
Technology is challenging today.
Okay, this one is not set in Tabor. This actually predates Tabor. Um, I believe in the 1900s is when this was set. So this is five and a half percent plus local growth. This one is something that the division actually can help you calculate and it does enforce. And these three are important because if you use the property tax formula and you know any of these two variables, you can always solve for the third, which gets you each of those three limits. The reason why it's important to calculate each of those three limits is because they need to work in conjunction with each other. They all need to harmonize because the perception is that whichever limit produces the lowest amount of revenue is the number that you're going to have to work with for your budget. So the most restrictive produces the least amount of property tax. And here is an example of our town of Gold Dust. So they're preparing their 2022 budget. And I've given it away. So, okay. These numbers here are actually provided to you by the cap. In late August, they provide a preliminary assessed value, and they have all of these numbers for you. Then they have a final assessed value in December. So all these numbers will be available to you from the cap. You use these numbers to calculate each of those property tax-related limits. So for town of Gold Dust, for 2022, their mill levy is 9.265. And then we can see the revenue limits for Tabor in the five and a half percent program and an assessed value of 9.1. Um, and if you have seen, if we calculate all three limits, the lowest producing one is going to be the mill levy limit. That number that circled there is what they would have to work with in their budget for 2022. But then, it's really important to continue to calculate this again the next year because it could change. Particularly in the last few years where we've experienced low interest rates, most local governments who are subject to both Tabor and the five and a half percent law typically found that Tabor was more restrictive for them. This year, with inflation and rising interest rates, number of local governments who are subject to both of those limits probably will see that the five and a half percent limit will be the more restrictive. Um, in this case, for 2023, for the town of Gold Dust, one of the Tabor limits is still the most restrictive for them. However, if you notice, their mill levy, though, has decreased. So often, when this happens, local governments, to prevent a ratcheting down of that mill levy, will try to preserve it by maintaining a temporary reduction. There is a form that we have that can help explain this process to the public. But it's always also best to adopt a resolution. Definitely open your attorney because this is, again, one of those things that has not been tested in court, but it's very, very common in practice.
So I have another question.
Yes.
So, um, so for example, when we did our budget last year, our bottom line was set by the county. Then it wasn't set by what we thought our revenues, everything. It was set by the county.
And that, I might be able to answer that. So voters can approve an allowance to one or more of these limits. In terms of Tabor, you cannot debruce the entire amendment. So for ballot issues and questions that are trying to waive one of these limits when it comes to Tabor, that's nicknamed after the author, Debra Bruce, right? So debrusing. You can debruce the fiscal year spending limit and the property tax revenue limit. That was something I couldn't check for for the town.
We are, we have to debruce.
Okay. And you have also waived the five and a half percent too. So that might be why the county just did that too. And I won't go over De Gallagher fixing a ballot issue to increase the levy to cheap breakfast table. That's my racial fault because that's something that you would definitely need your attorney to work with. And then we did just briefly talk about the enterprise fund. So enterprise funds and Tabor are not, debt is not needed for voter approval for that. Um, as far as transferring between funds, I will definitely get back to you on that. But those are essentially the legal limits. And I'll wrap up with the approaches to budgeting and establishing financial policies. So unlike counting, which is a little bit more black and white, budgeting is, it allows for a lot of elements to be flexible. It really plays to having that local choice. We can see that there's at least five established approaches to budgeting. I'm only going to be going through two of them, the last two down there, traditional line item and priority-based budgeting. In government budgeting, we typically see the traditional line item. So we're asking, what are we spending revenue on at the fund level? It's very control-oriented. Sometimes, one of the downsides to this type of budgeting is it can be confusing for your community, particularly if your line items are not descriptive or they might be too descriptive and only people within your organization understand what it means. So just something to know when you're using the traditional line item approach. Priority-based budgeting, sometimes called performance-based budgeting, is really gaining in popularity these days. This type of budgeting approach really lends itself to asking the question of, what problem are we going to solve for our community this year? We're looking more at how can we best use our revenues to support the community's priorities versus what do we need to cut? Establishing financial policies is also very important if you haven't done so already or have had a chance to take a look and updated your financial policies. Um, these are guidelines, um, typically adopted by the governing board. It's a really collaborative effort, I think, between administrative staff and the board. But it does provide boundaries for acceptable actions and procedures for unacceptable actions. Um, I like to put this link, this financial policy challenge here, um, provided by GFOA Government Finance Officers Association. They actually, um, have great resources about financial policies, what to adopt and what they do is submit your set of financial policies to them. If it meets their standards, the improvement of, as a yay, you get to be on their website and be one of those standards that others can use and see and refer to. Um, I think there are three municipalities from Colorado that have met their set criteria for, um, best financial policies. But some of the key policies that you should definitely consider or establish, um, for general fund reserves, what's your targeted balance reserves? The condition for using those reserves? Your revenues? How do you use one-time revenues? What's, um, going to, how are you going to cover costs with user fees? Budgeting and financial planning, structurally balanced budget, what does that look like? Long-term planning, capital planning, um, what's the process for developing a long-term capital improvement plan? Uh, accounting for operating budget impacts, debt, what's the acceptable uses? What's your limits on debt? And maturity guidelines as well. So there's a lot of resources out there. Um, I can be a resource. Dana has obviously been a great resource. Um, we do have a, a GIP uh, webpage. Right here. Okay. I'll just keep looking along, but our budget webpage has, um, important deadlines on there too. And we also offer some sample templates for reference or for you to use as well. Um, and those templates pertain to any resolutions that are related to the budget law, so even amendment resolutions. Um, there's also a more in-depth budget calendar, which also incorporates, uh, the audit law as well. And then also some instructions on how to actually e-file your annual budget at the end of January. And these are also some resources from associations that we really like to use as well for ourselves for our educational purposes and usually what we would forward along to look at these too. Um, I'm happy to, did leave a copy of the PowerPoint, so if anyone wants to click through these.
Yeah. So yeah, I keep thinking of tend to similar one product version.
Yes.
That last page.
Yes. Um, but that wraps up budget one oh one. So next up, we're going to have my colleague Marcellus Briscoe. Um, some financial trends, but before we move on to Marcellus, is there any other questions that you might have? Okay. That's my contact information too. Feel free to reach out. That way you can share screen.
Are, are you guys ready for me to go or is there any questions? Okay. I wasn't sure. All right. Can everybody see my PowerPoint? All right. So, uh, starting off, uh, my name is Marcellus Briscoe. I work with Mia at the Division of Local Government. Uh, my main job is a local government financial analyst, uh, in charge of what we call the Financial Compendium. Uh, it's basically a financial database that looks at audits for counties and municipalities. Um, trying to apples to apples the data because, uh, there's, everybody has a different auditor and might call certain things, different things. Uh, and on top of that, I also put together trends analysis for our regional managers. Um, sorry, I couldn't be there in person today. Uh, I've been taking care of my grandma and actually had to take her to a appointment today and I'll be visiting her after this. So, uh, sorry, I couldn't be there. Hopefully next time I can, uh, be there in person and see, see your guys' wonderful faces. Um, before I get started on the trends analysis, I just kind of want to paint the picture of what this is. Uh, it's looking at financial data for the past seven, eight years, uh, to the most recent audit that we have from the Office of the State Officers, uh, OSA, uh, which would be twenty twenty. And basically this is just kind of a thirty thousand foot view of what do these numbers kind of tell us? Um, you guys, the board, the town are going to have a lot better in detailed answers for certain things that will fill kind of some of the story gaps here. Um, but basically this is just what, what do these numbers tell me looking from way up top, from way out here in the Denver office? Um, so to start off, we will cover the general government side, um, which is basically your general fund. Uh, you have a sales tax fund, all the funds that aren't the water and sewer. And on that side, we'll cover, uh, I'll, I'll talk about population. I'll talk about retail sales and assessed valuations, uh, what, uh, role those might play. I'll cover net position. Uh, I will cover a couple of different ratios and then break down revenues and expenditures. So I always kind of like to start off with, uh, a general population slide. Um, just to kind of paint the picture of how this might affect revenue and expenditure. So for your town, it's been very steady over the years. Um, had it been increased or it didn't create, uh, uh, increase or decreasing, um, it would be fair to expect changes in expenditures. For example, are we going to have to provide more services if our population has been steadily increasing? And how that might affect expenditures going forward and things like that. Um, but for Peonya, it's been very steady over the years and probably will be this, remain that way. Um, oh, and if I, I kind of have a propensity to breeze through things. So at any time, please stop and if you have any questions or need any clarified, clarifications on anything. Um, so this next slide right here is retail sales. And what this is an indicator for, it kind of shows us what the sales tax base will be for a local government. And as we can see here from around twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, it's been slowly increasing. And we get to the revenue portion, we'll see how that affects revenue. But this is always, it's always good, it's good to look at things like this to see what's kind of the trend of the base of where our revenue comes from. And this is for the sales tax, uh, side of things. Um, the next two slides will get into the property tax side of things. So on this slide, I have assessed valuation and the mill levy, um, the assessed valuation being the darker line and the mill levy being the lighter one, it might be a little hard to see. Um, we can see in twenty thirteen, uh, the mill levy was, and the mills would be on the right-hand side of the slide and the dollar amount on the left-hand side will be associated with the assessed valuation. So for the mill levy, we see in twenty thirteen, uh, it's way down compared to every other year. And that's because in that year, there was a temporary tax credit. Going back to Mia's presentation, which I love following those because she covers so much of so many different things that you also see in the financial data. So twenty thirteen, there was a, a temporary tax credit uh, to comply with revenue limits. And we can also see that the, on the assessed valuation side, been very stable. Except for in twenty twenty, there was a pretty significant jump in assessed valuation, which might indicate a bump going forward in property tax revenue. Um, and it's, it's kind of going back to the, uh, to those legal limits Mia was talking about this, that's something to keep in the back of your mind, uh, going forward is if the assessed valuation keeps increasing or the, the residential assessment rate, which is a whole nother topic that we don't have the most expertise to give on, but it's something to be aware of. There is, there's outside factors that may come into play with revenue going forward. And it's just helpful to be aware of things like that. Um, this next slide is a breakdown of the assessed valuation by class. The, the line at the top is residential. The line below it's kind of hard to see. It's hiding right on the graph line. But that's the commercial and pretty much everything else is near the bottom. And we, as we can see here, there has been a jump in residential and commercial. But it's also not worth noting, uh, keeping in the back of your minds, the residential assessment rate going forward. Um, and how this might affect revenue, especially with the bulk of revenue, a bulk of assessed valuation being tied up in residential properties. Um, so just something to keep in mind. Um, I'm going to go ahead and move forward. So this graph here is total net position and basically it's just a fancy governmental accounting way of saying, what is the, our local government's total net worth? And it's important to, for me to say that, that the number here isn't as important as the trend. The trend when looking at total net position is what you want to focus on. And as we can see from twenty sixteen on, the trend has been steadily growing. So that's, we don't like to talk in like good thing or bad thing, but there's no like alarm bells when you see something like that, that the trend is steadily increasing. Um, this next slide kind of breaks down what goes into net position. So for, um, local governments, you'll have investment in capital assets, restricted non-capital assets and unrestricted non-capital assets. It's typical for local governments to have most of their net position locked up in capital assets. Um, I usually do not include this slide because it's not the most exciting or informative. But one thing that I noticed that was a little different from other trends analysis that I've done is uh, there's a couple of years here in the middle, um, with the restricted non-capital assets. So it's everything in the audit that's not committed, not assigned in an, and, and what do they call it? Unassigned. So everything that the audit classifies as strictly restricted, which is usually restricted by law like taper or a resolution or something like that from the board. So from twenty fourteen to seventeen, that number was pretty significant compared to unrestricted. It was not something that we usually see with local governments and, and doing this, but I know looking at the audits, there was a bridge. I believe this was tied up to, and associated with some kind of bridge fund. Um, so that's most likely what was indicating for those. Um, but nothing like, no, nothing to be alarmed about. It was just something interesting that I don't usually see. Um, there were two years, however, for twenty sixteen and mostly just twenty sixteen here where unrestricted is negative. And when I go on some other, some, uh, ratio slides going on, uh, Mia talked about some key policies and reserve policies and that's just kind of where we might see how that could prevent things like that from in the future. Uh, having negative unrestricted capital assets. Um, this slide.
Can I stop for a second?
Yeah, go, yeah, go ahead.
Would you explain what was, and go back to the last slide?
Back right here? Yes.
The difference between, um, restricted non-capital assets and unrestricted non-capital assets?
Yes.
Yeah, example.
This first one too, investment in capital assets.
Yes.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll do my best to explain all three. So net investment in capital assets. What that is, is if we were to have one of your audits in front of us right now, it would be the total sum of all the capital assets associated with your general government in the general funds, that'd be, uh, town hall, uh, streets, parks, things like that. All the, all the valuation of those assets, net depreciation. So whatever depreciation schedule the audit uses, um, some, it, it varies and that would have to be a discussion with that staff. Um, some use straight line depreciation, some have different depreciation schedules. But it's just whatever the total value of those capital assets are less how much the depreciation schedule is taken off of them. And that's typically will be most of your net position because that's just the infrastructure that you have. Restricted non-capital assets, the, the best example I will give is taper. Tabor requires an emergency reserve fund. Um, so restricted non-capital assets are things that are restricted by law. And I believe that they could also be restricted by the resolution of the board or an ordinance. Uh, I'll have to get back to you on those last two, but I know for sure there are things restricted by law. Tabor is the biggest example of things. Unrestricted is everything that's not restricted by law. Now, kind of tying into Mia's presentation and, and your budget process, if you wanted to commit certain funds to a project, for example, we see for a capital project that you have coming up soon, you may set aside reserve funds for that project as a decision item. That's not the same as restricted and it's kind of, in it, it will be outlined in the audit. Um, it'll be assigned as committed. There's some that's assigned. Those are usually staff recommendations. So committed are usually board. Assigned is usually staff and then everything else is unrestricted. On this slide, everything that's unrestricted is just everything that's not restricted by a certain law, if that makes any sense.
Could I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
So is a restricted non-capital net asset something like money you have to set aside to fulfill bond requirements?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So this slide is kind of expanding in the same vein. Uh, it looks at unrestricted fund balance to expenditures. Basically what this expenditures net capital, basically what this slide is saying is do we have enough liquid reserves to cover annual expenses? Um, we can see here from some early long, early years, some fluctuation here. And usually when we see things like that, this would be a good time for the boards to kind of have a conversation around reserve policies. Um, I will say just kind of looking a little closer at the audits. Actually, no, it's more for enterprises. Sorry. Um, but I'm thinking, I was getting, I was jumping way ahead to enterprises from what I saw earlier. Um, so yeah, this is usually kind of when we introduce the idea of having reserve policy discussions. Um, we will see the last three years, it's been steadily over sixty percent. Um, Mia mentioned GF away, uh, I too will also reference them a lot and I also have some links for them as well, but they are a tremendous resource that we point to and lean on often. Um, there is no right answer on what the reserve should be. Um, they suggest some best practices and ultimately it's up to the town to decide kind of what level of unrestricted fun balance do we want to have? Um, I can throw an example of like I've seen, I've done trends analysis for other local governments where they have three hundred percent um, unrestricted to their annual expenditures. And in those cases, you know, it, it would be worth the question if, if you had a citizen looking at the eye, like, why are you sitting on so much money and things like that? Um, so it's just basically just to, to just kind of think about what, what does the, the town itself, what does our local government feel comfortable doing, um, going forward? Uh, so pause, see if there's any question. And, and, and this as well, I will add, and this as well, it's It's if you were to look at an audit for any year, this is going to include everything that's either unassigned, assigned, or committed on the fund balances on your balance sheet. So you could even it it may look bad, but if there's a here like for twenty sixteen, but if there's a large number in committed, it's just because you've set money aside for a particular project, things like that. So not hearing any questions. I'll move on to a our capital asset condition ratio.
So it just sounds, I'm just gonna ask such a remedial question, but it just sounds that like you're questioning why this unrestricted fund balance, like you sound nervous about it or it should be. It's like, why is that not a good thing?
Well, so for example, if we look at twenty sixteen, that's what that is saying is if something were to happen and the town were to like not be able to have any revenue that year, like this is, we kind of think of like an extreme scenario. Like if you weren't able to have any revenue that year, could what you have in reserves cover your expenditures, could you still keep services going? And twenty sixteen, that would indicate that would not be the case. Well, if you look at twenty eighteen, where let's say it's at seventy five percent because it's between sixteen and seventy there, you could, it would, it would suggest that for that year, what we have in reserves, if we pulled all our ass liquid assets, we could cover seventy five percent of the year in expenditures. So a kind of example that would be for the COVID nineteen pandemic, when everybody was shut down. If that had lasted longer, say, then it did like before we reopened up, like, do we have money in the bank to cover our services? We don't have to cut services. So looking at unrestricted fund balance is just a way of saying, how can we, can we keep the town going for X amount of time in case of something were to happen? Did that, did that cover? I'm sorry?
It's good to have a lot in there like that, the way it looks, it is last three years.
Hesitate saying a lot. I think this is where having a policy in place for the town, so you could explain what your plan is. When I brought up the example of some local governments having three hundred percent because they want to have a lot, well, then you kind of might open yourself up to questions about why you're sitting on so much money, things like that. So just having a policy in place is a great way to kind of maintain and to cover yourself for those kind of questions. And like I said, there's no right or wrong answer to what this number should be. GF always best practices having like two to three months of unrestricted fund balances to your annual expenditures or annual revenues. So at the end of the day, just kind of is a discussion to have amongst the board about what you feel comfortable with going forward.
So best practices are two or three months, that's really only twenty five percent, not seventy five or eighty.
Exactly, but it it varies from which each board wants to do. And that's just, that's and that's just GF away's best practice. You guys could ultimately decide sixty percent is great because you have some things and some other planning policies that you've done that you want to prepare for, things like that. All those key policies that Mia talked about earlier kind of really play into how it shows up in the financial data coming up later. And that, and when you have these policies, you have an answer to show somebody.
So if we're saving up for something, will that show up on this graph as an increase?
It would, yes. So it wouldn't, that this this isn't necessarily too good or too bad. And either ways, it's just kind of a jumping off point to have discussions.
Thank you.
No problem. All right. Next one is our general government capital asset condition. This is essentially, if we think about back to that component of net position slide, this is what is depreciation? What is the amount of depreciation on our capital assets that are associated with the general government? And so it's been pretty steady for this trend, it's been around sixty to sixty five percent. There's no alarm bells either in either direction. Typically, when I bring these slide up, it's just good to have a kind of it's good to have policies around that too, just to keep track of things, whether it's a capital asset inventory, capital management policies, things like that, just so you guys can keep track of things like that. But this is shown, it's just been steady over the years, we can indicate some capital investment has been taking place. So the next couple of slides, we'll be breaking down revenues and expenditures. What we have here is a red line, blue line, the blue line on top is general revenue. The line below is general expenditures and the bars in the back are associated with capital grants and capital expenditures. So for the most part, we can see that revenue has exceeded expenditures, which is always a great thing. The large spike in twenty seventeen is a transfer in from the water fund. Not particular, oh, I'll I'll go into more with when I get to the when I get into the enterprise funds, but you don't usually see numbers that large, but it's not like a good or bad thing. And in the back, the blue bars are expenditures and the green ones are capital grants. So indicating that that's kind of why the capital asset condition ratio chart has been relatively steady because you can see that it's been investment into your capital assets. Going, breaking down a little further on the revenues here, these this bar graph kind of shows the breakdown in percentages of what categories your revenue falls into. We've got sales tax, property tax, other taxes, charges, intergovernmental, so like your highway users, trust fund, grants, things like that, going to that bucket and everything else falls into miscellaneous. And we can see that not one revenue source is dominating, which is good, we like to promote revenue diversification. Where oftentimes when I do this, usually a town will be either heavily reliant on one source of revenue, which is when we would say, suggest it'd be helpful talking about ways to diversify that. But for here, we can see there's a not again, not one overly dominating source of revenue. I will add that with that said, sales tax and intergovernmental for the past couple of years combined make up around fifty or more percent of revenue. And it's just, I just want to note that because those two sources of revenue are a little bit more volatile, they they vary year to year depending on a lot of external factors. On the and in contrast, property tax is a, the most stable source of revenue for local governments. So I just wanted to note that the sort of kind of the most of the revenues coming from two sources of volatility, but overall big picture, it's got some good diversification going on here. And then breaking down the trends wise, the for the revenue, the line on top is taxes, just all lumped into one. Then we have charge revenue, charges finds a permit, sorry, intergovernmental and miscellaneous. And the bars in the back represent grant revenue, capital grants, kind of what we saw on the earlier slide. Very stable, as we can see, and from twenty seventeen on, we can see a steady growth in taxes, which is likely due to the steady growth in retail sales over that time period in addition to the growth of assessed valuation in the last year as well. And then this this slide is expenditure trends. There's not, I mean, you included many slides as far as expenditures, just because there's not as much breakdown on that side as far as the audits are concerned, but this slide is just the trends over time. And nothing out of the, uh, nothing like overly concerning here. We got the bars in the back representing capital outlay or your investments in your capital assets. We have a dip in overall expenditures for the first half and then a steady increase back up in the second half of this graph, so just again, keeping note of increasing cost of things. But if we were to go back to the earlier slide of general revenues over general expenditures, revenues are exceeding expenditures, so there's nothing threatened there yet. And that's just kind of what's been going on in the past. So that covers the general government financial data. So I will be going into the enterprise funds, both your water and your sewer fund, and I'll be talking about total revenues, operating revenues and expenditures. And then I'll also kind of do a breakdown as well of revenue types, expenditure types, and I'll get into the capital asset conditions of both funds. So I'll start with the water fund first. This is total revenues and total expenditures. And the bars in the back are current assets minus current liabilities. Or and you can think about those as the reserves of the fund. The liquid assets covering what's the most immediate liabilities going forward. So for the water fund, we can see that the total expenditures have generally exceeded total revenues. And we see some fluctuation here as well. But we can, we will be covering what these may or may not be going forward. This slide is operating revenues versus operating expenditures, operating revenues being charges. The water charges specifically and operating expenditures plus debt service. So things that you are expecting to pay every year going forward. And for this chart, we can see that operating, that charges, operating revenue has generally exceeded operating expenditures. Started included these, this slide more in our presentations because the this is more of an indicator of the health of the fund. Can what we're for sure expecting to bring in every year, cover our annual costs every year? And the trend of that at least shows that that's what's been happening on the operating side of things. I will note that in, we can see the bars in the back, the reserves, your current assets minus your current liabilities have been steadily declining over the years, but I think we'll kind of get into some explanations why going on to some of these next slides. So first, we'll talk about the water funds broken out. So it's kind of hard to see, but there's an orange line in the middle, that is your charges revenue. And we can see that again, as the operating, want to show that that it's steadily increasing. We have a red line, which is going to be this first line graph spike here in twenty fifteen. And then, which is our intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenue, so our grant revenue for the fund. We have capital fees and what capital fees are is typically how we cap write is tap fees. Tap fees for the fund. And we can see that's blue, there was a large spike in twenty seventeen for that. And then everything else is either a line at zero or in the back, we have transfers in. The transfers in bar graphs are denoted for the numbers on the right side and everything else is from the numbers on the left side. So the only noteworthy things are the kind of the three spikes, the twenty fifteen intergovernmental spike, transfer in spike. I believe looking at your audits kind of can help. Those kind of came for, we'll be talking about the next slide, there's some capital activity going on for those. One thing that I don't really have an answer for is why the capital fee number for twenty seventeen is. Typically, again, capital fee, trend, tap fees, that's rev, that's one time revenue for if a new house was built and they wanted to access the water line, so they get a tap. I I don't have a good answer where this number might be, why why it might be one point eight million. Yeah, uh, kind of my first hypothesis where if it was a new fund, that would make sense. I'm I'm sorry?
It was, we did a the housing development, that's what that's.
Ah, okay, well, there that is. So like I said, you guys would help fill in a lot of the questions for me. So that's what that number is. Again, one time revenues, uh, again, like Mia was saying earlier, we like to see going towards one time expenditures, which we see on this next graph, you had some capital outlay by that purple line there. And we could also see at the bottom, uh, there's a blue line for your operating expenditures, a little spike in twenty eighteen. Looking at the audit, looked like it was just due to maybe excess repairs and maintenance, but nothing, nothing drastically out of the ordinary. My guess to explain the twenty seventeen transfer out number in the back there is repaying the general fund for that transfer in. But I don't have a good answer, looking from just that number that a paper. But just my guess of what that might be. We typically kind of pay a little extra note to transfers in and out. Just as an indicator to see whether a fund is being supplemented or not by the general fund or vice versa. We don't think that's, I don't think that's the case here, but it's just something that we always take note of with that.
Could you answer the question whether it's permissible to take money from a enterprise fund and put it in the general fund and vice versa? Or is that impermissible or one way works, the other doesn't?
The great question, I actually wrote it on my notebook here. Felt the same way me did, I was like.
You just said it kind of alluded to that.
It it's not that I don't see it happening. I I know that specifically in relation to Tabor, I don't have a great answer as what it does, whether it's permissible or not. It's just, for example, for the health of a fund, if if we had consistently seen transfers in, it it would be an indicator of maybe this fund isn't doing so well because it's being supplemented by the general fund. So it's not a for sure answer, it's just kind of things that we would look for to ask questions as why is this happening? And
I have a question too, so can that transfer in come from say sewer fund or the trash?
I will actually go into the sewer fund next. I guess that what I, I was talking about the trash fund, I didn't mention this earlier, but for our compendium model that we do for this state, we lumped in the trash fund into into the general government side of things. I can provide, why do we do that? We, we kind of like to separate activities as strictly for what's business like and what kind of is government, more government like. And before I got into my position, funds like trash fund, solid waste, like recycle funds, kind of were seen as more general government services provided rather than exclusively business like. So I won't be talking about the trash fund separately because it was lumped into the general government revenues and expenditures and all that kind of stuff. But to answer your sewer question, I will be getting to that. Moving after this, the water, uh, water fund things.
Yeah, I I can answer for you what that transfer out is. So a previous administrator was booking a grant that was a water enterprise, a water grant through the general fund. And that was a change in management and the rebooking of moving it out and so that it was tracked correctly.
Oh, and then put it in water. Okay, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I come in with questions and you guys always, you guys have answers too, so that's good to know. And then the last slide I have for the water fund is the, again, the capital assets condition, uh, condition of capital assets. Again, we can also see that the the investment being made, uh, where the early years is around fifty percent and it's jumped up to seventy, sixty five, seventy. So good there, but also like I mentioned with the general government side of things, it's always helpful to have a capitalist inventory. Capitalist inventory, capital management policies, things like that, just to keep track of this on a, on a deeper level. Because we're just looking at a depreciation scale in the audit, they may not be exact, it may not be as telltale for specific assets for any of the funds. So that's it for the water fund, here we will look at the total revenue and expenditures for the sewer fund. Similar story on the total revenue and expenditure sides, where for the most part expenditures have exceeded. Total revenues, in the back there, we also have the reserves again, the capital of the current assets minus current liabilities. Or the reserves of, of the sewer fund, which have been more stable than the water fund. Looking at the operating, a little bit different story than the water fund, we see here that the. Operating expenditures have more often not exceeded char, operating expenditure, revenues, charges. So when we see things like this, it might prompt discussions for if there needs to be a sewer rate charge study. Or something like that, just to help keep the operating side of the sewer fund. A little bit more healthy. With that said, though, that the reserves of the fund being relatively stable. Even growing a little bit over the past couple of years, it's very noteworthy. My guess is be that, since there's less capital activity in this fund, that it hasn't been the need to draw into so much reserves. Keeping that where it is, but again, having reserve policies for all your funds. Is, is a nice talking port to have for boards. Breaking down the sewer fund revenues, the line at the top, it's charges, we see steadily growing. And that one spike in twenty seventeen for other revenue is attributable to a sale of an asset. Apart from that, nothing jumping out on the revenue side. And here we have the sewer fund expenditures. For the operating expenditures, that blue line there. Overall trend steadily increasing, same as kind of charge revenue, expected. A little more volatility there, as far as some up and down spikes. I don't have a great explanation for, but I think just the overall trend is just noteworthy there, then we have our debt service. Yeah, some debt service there, and the bars in the back are the transfers out. Again, no like right, wrong answer as to why, it's just something that we would make notice, why is this fund. Constantly transferring out, are they admin fees, or is there some other kind of. Reason for the sewer fund doing that, that might just be something for you guys to talk about as a board and. The purple line here, we see very minimal capital activity here in this fund. But looking at the condition of capital assets, makes sense, been over seventy percent for. This, this, the look of this trend. So. That's all I have for water and sewer funds and for the whole trends analysis as a whole. Again, some additional GFO resources that are most definitely duplicates of Mia's, but her slide looks a lot better. And if there's any other questions, comments you guys have for me, feel free.
Go ahead, Dave.
How much, first of all, you did a deep dive into a bunch of different audit reports. I believe over time, there were three different audits, so how much does the auditor and the assumptions the auditor make. Impact what you're trying to show over time?
That's a fantastic question, so that's one thing that we, that the financial compendium tries. To mitigate is. Different, what different auditors may call some things. One example, I can think specifically of looking at your guys' trend is the, when I showed the components of net position. Some of the things in restricted. I, I don't, I can't like for sure say what others do what, but I know that. Different auditors will sometimes label things in different parts there, so it could be an explanation as why maybe for a couple of years, the restricted one. The restricted was as high as it was, and that component of net position slide. But as far as looking at revenues and expenditures, what we try to do on this model, it, it does its best to. To kind of mitigate the differences of, well, maybe this auditor calls it a fee, and maybe this one calls it a tax kind of thing. We try to capture that. To try to, so we, when we look across years, it's as uniform as it can be, but I think it probably makes some kind of difference, having different auditors. Do I know to what extent? I don't think it's a big extent, that's what I'll end on saying there.
Thank you, it's just a, a comment about being consistent over time and not switching auditors a lot. That was good, Marcelo, thank you.
Stop sharing the screen.
And we'll get a copy of your slides too.
Yes, I'll, I'll send a copy of my slides as well, I also have a, a word document that I have on my notes, non-positions for, I can send that as well.
That would be wonderful, thank you so much.
Yes.
Okay. So Dana, you have any follow-ups or anything you want to do?
So I, I think that. In, in talking with James, in particular about the water and sewer projects you have coming up. I just want to give you an example of the challenge of words facing, starting hopefully in this budget cycle. Assuming you want to come in and get a, let's say a new water treatment plant. There's a capital expense that costs, there's that ongoing operations and maintenance. For the duration and life of that plant, there's also replacement and repair costs for that plant to go on for the foreseeable future. And one of the tasks you have, the role of staff, is to figure out what those are. And schedule them out for the indefinite future, not just look, this is what we're gonna do this year. The timing of this task is critically important. The next energy impact cycle opens August first, next week, and closes September first. To get into that application, the most you're gonna be looking for is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Just gonna throw some numbers out, but not particularly your project. Let's just say you had a two million dollar project. You could ask us for seven hundred and fifty, but we're gonna say, where does the under twelve, one point two five million coming from? You may want to go to state revolving fund for that, they only is going to qualify as a disadvantaged community. If you're otherwise qualified based on your reserves and that you're willing to pay off a debt, and you qualify for that one point two five. It would most likely qualify for forty nine percent grant or loan forgiveness aspect, which basically means. Forty nine percent of that, you don't have to repay. But you could potentially get into a two million dollar capital project with only debt of about six hundred and fifty thousand euro take. But your timing is within the next thirty days to figure out whether that's something you want to do. Sounds attractive, but without even going into the next budget cycle, you have to know, can we afford that debt service on six hundred and fifty thousand dollars? For this project, and as both Mia and Marcel has talked about, how long do you want to carry that debt? What are those maturity dates? You can't look at that project in isolation, because you've got other capital projects you want to come forward with. We talked about potential sewer project, you've got new enforcement protocols or standards coming down in twenty twenty seven. What is that gonna mean? What's the cost of that capital project? Can you overlay that debt on top of this debt? So it gets to be a very, very complicated picture, and I think relying on Jeremiah, your public work staff. James, any work with your staff or Cindy or Harvard who that current is doing between now and then, it's gonna be critically important. But you're at a stage as a community, if you've got some capital asset needs that need to happen. My recommendation, you can get the first one with SRF money, which has a pretty good forgiveness rate. And coupled with an energy impact grant, will put you in a good position for future grants. But it's, or future capital projects, but it's not too early to start looking at what is your bonding capacity as a town. Because SRF forgiveness loans through federal funding isn't gonna be available forever. And, and I know interest rates are going up, between bond rates are going up, but you need to start looking at these other alternatives for financing. Energy impact, that will be around for a while, but look at seven fifty, you still have to come up with a one to one match. A little concerning when I look at operational revenue and charges versus expenses. I, I really hope the town, I know you've done some work on raising rates in, in the past. But really start looking and communicating with your community, and then really building that trust that when you come and say. If these are the capital needs we have over the coming years, this is how we're gonna finance, it can't be done through bake sales. There's camp, there's gotta be some really soon made, future talent, I know that I'm, I'm sorry, I just. We look at the comprehensive plan, those are the kind of things that need to be answered. When we look at the water treatment plant, for instance, we talked about current capacity. And you have current permits based on your, your treatment and outflows, and the same thing as a sewer plant. If you want to add a subdivision, if you want to annex, what's the load being put on your systems by those future plants? And does it kick you into a new permitting cycle that requires more treatment facilities or greater capital investment? So it's, it's all intertwined, and, and that's kind of why I, I push for this bigger visioning. You gotta know where are you really going as a town, beyond just what's this capital project that we want to do in the next year. So that's really why I decided I wanted to be here, like, you guys know you've got a very difficult job, and I'm really just trying to emphasize that. The detail interwoven, both the short term and the long term, not just of the capital project. Where it is you want your town to go. Know that, so next step you take, taking that. There was a question about can you transfer in and out from, from enterprise funds? I never recommend it, never recommend, there are times. Or an enterprise fund is drawing low because you just haven't set rates right, or you had an expenditure or down reserves. You may want to loan money from the general fund, it happens. One thing I would say, please, please, please stay away from if at all possible, is borrowing from your enterprise funds. I've seen many governments over forty years say, well, you know, have taxes in low, this is low, one, we've got great reserves in our enterprise funds. Let's borrow, and then this debt sits out there. And four or five election cycles later, everybody kind of forgets about the debt, and, and a new finance person forgets to book it. And it never really gets recreated, and, and that's breaking the trust that, that, that you have, or you've built with your rate payers. That you're gonna use that money for that particular purpose, so I strongly don't recommend, but you haven't seen that in our. I, I haven't looked at your, 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 your budget over all those years, I looked at last year's to get to, get an idea of it. Marcelos would have a, a better idea, I haven't seen that in particular.
Yeah, Cindy.
We have not done that in the time that I've been here.
I think so, but you might as well ask a question. Bad practice and it's a sign of a, of a healthy government when you start doing that.
We've gotten some pretty bad news from different analysis we've had about what our infrastructure is looking like, what our infrastructure needs are. You know, and what our rate structures are, and we've gotten a lot of blowback for increasing as much as we did last year. In the year before, but you know, you're still saying it's not enough.
You know, in twenty twenty seven, you've got new treatment coming down on your sewer plant. If you don't have the capital to be able to do what's gonna be required to meet those treatment standards. Then not only you're not gonna be able to snuff, you're gonna start being fined by city state cheating. And now your debt starts rising, that's not a good position to be in. Plan for it, the rate study, I'm not an expert, it causes me concern. But I haven't done the rate study, I think James, a part of the, the work he's doing for. The old is to kind of look at that in general terms and make some recommendations, and that was an extra service I did beyond. Our initial, your initial contract with them, that we're able to provide through a special contract we have with you.
So we do have a sewer. Is there a rate study, or CAC? Again? Yeah, it's our CAC, so I do a sewer rate study for us. And we just did the water rate study last week. Yeah.
That's all I have, unless anybody has any question, I appreciate you taking the time, it's an important subject. This is really helpful.
Really helpful, oh my goodness.
As always, that's what we're here, neatly, and Dola and my partners at DLG and fiscal sector. Since, and we, we are starting, in fact Mia and Marcelas are both on a team, that's led by Cynthia Thager in fiscal section. But we're trying to provide an even greater impetus for feed people over towns. To create a greater sense of fiscal stability within the town, make sure those policies are there to encourage it. Can't force you to do anything, I want to encourage it, those are the kind of things that can build long-term fiscal health for your community. You will lead the flank since you're assistant.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything you want to say, James?
Okay, all right. Thank you, all of you.